UBSutter.live's local government live streams are presented by Plumas Lake Self-Storage in Plumas Lake, where lifelong local residents are helping other residents keep things safe, providing indoor storage units, outdoor RV and vehicle parking, moving supplies, and Penske truck rentals. Details at plumaslakeselfstorage.com.
And Mr. Seth Steeman is going to do the Pledge of Allegiance.
Please stand for the pledge.
Salute, pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Please be seated. Announcements of action taken in closed session. With unanimous vote, the board has approved suspended expulsion contracts EH 242574 through 76, a total of three, with a unanimous decision to approve. Moving on to comments from board members. Mr. Stefan Fuer. Chong Yang.
Yeah, I just want to welcome everybody to the board meeting, and I want to graduate our graduates and students who are being promoted to high school. It's going to be exciting at the end of the year. I also want to thank the staff, teachers, and parents for making this year a successful year, and then wish everybody a restful and fun summer.
Thank you. Mr. Taylor. Mr. Steeman.
Thank you, everybody, for being here. I'd like to echo some of what Dr. Yang has said. Congratulations to all of our graduates and on a very successful year. Thank you to all the teachers and staff members for all of your time. I had the pleasure of attending an event last week at Lenhurst. It was pretty amazing. It was the FFA Awards banquet. We have a lot of amazing things happening in this district, and a lot to be proud of. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Galicia. Mr. Frank Crawford. Thank you, everybody. Now we move on to recognitions. All right.
All right, before we get started, I'm going to go ahead and I'd like to read something specific to our retirees. First of all, good evening, everyone. Thank you for joining us this evening. It's truly an honor to celebrate an incredible group of individuals who have dedicated many years in their career and education. Some of our retirees have been with our district for their entire career, and others finishing just with us. They have served in many capacities to educate and provide service to our community, families, and students. To our retiring colleagues, you have spent your days, often your nights, and sometimes your weekends, building a district we can all be proud of. Whether you were in the classroom, on a bus route, maintaining facilities, feeding our students, or working behind the scenes, your work mattered every single day. You've left your mark on our district and on the hearts of thousands of students. Retirement is a well-earned opportunity to enjoy the next chapter, knowing your legacy remains firmly rooted in the success of this district and the families of our community. On behalf of the entire school district and community, thank you. We wish you happiness, health, and joy. Congratulations on your retirement.
Yeah?
Okay, I'm Lori Guy, Director of Data and Student Improvement, and at this time, we'd also like to invite the administrators of the retirees to line up over here so that your retirees can be recognized with you. Lynda Thompson. Sandra Torres. Merrill Grant. Cindy Swinson. Raylene Robinson. I know the next one's here. Lynn Lucas. Whatever you want, Lynn. Karen Anderson. Jamie Larson. Dawn Mitchell. Sharla Shalise. Karen Scott. Bron Jakes. Tobin Covert. Amy Stratton. Bart Moorfield. Tina Baker. Bobby Vardell. Congratulations to our retirees. All right, everybody come back for a picture. Do we have somebody taking the picture? I think I'm taking the picture. I'll make sure you look good. Guys, get over there. Nice try. Nice try. You almost made it. You didn't move right at the moment I was about to take it. Am I supposed to say that now? Okay, and we have some treats to celebrate the retirees outside if you guys are interested. Are we going to go long? All right, our first recognition, I'm honored to present this, MJUSD was honored to be selected to present MJUSD's Literacy Plan in Action, the California Department of Education's All Titles Conference in the Spring of 2025. This prestigious opportunity highlighted the district's ongoing commitment to advancing literacy. The presentation featured the dedicated work of our teachers, highlighted by Zach and Shanna, whose leadership in implementing the literacy plan was clearly evident in their daily efforts. Their collaboration with teachers across the district was instrumental in achieving the plan's goals. Attendees noted the evident passion and shared commitment to literacy that drives the work in our schools. At this time, Zach Schultz.
We haven't brought him back up with the teachers. Now for students. Okay, thank our students for being so patient waiting. So tonight, it's my honor to introduce our students for their Positive Impact Awards. We have Kelly Jones from Cedar Lane. Avery Agarunzo from Edgewater. Daniel Johnston from Edgewater. Mauricio Sedano from Marysville High School. Kaja Anderson from McKinney. Huh? Anthony? Oh, I missed one. Anthony Inman from MCAA. Erin Salzby from Oliver's Preschool. And Garrick Solvin from Yvah Feather. And now, parents, this is a great time to get your pictures. So come on up while we get everybody situated. Picture time. Congratulations. I don't know. I think we need one more picture. Okay, and on to our staff Positive Impact Awards. We have Dirk Van Stralen from Browns Valley. Carmen Matida from Child Development. Jessica Jones from Dobbins. Arely Yubias from Ella. Heather T. Garden Baker from Kynock. Carly George from McKinney. And Jennifer Diego from North-South Lenhurst. And let's come on out for pictures. Pictures. I'm trying them for pictures on this one. Thank you, guys, for all that you do for our students.
Thank you. No, I'll sit there and, well...
All right, we're going to move on to number seven, opportunity for employee organizations to adjust the board. Angela Steagle, Marysville Unified Teachers Association. Angela? The floor is yours.
So Angela Steagle, President, Marysville Unified Teachers Association, and I thought the end of recognitions cleared a room pretty quickly before I came up here before, but when you put cupcakes out there, I just don't have a chance. There's absolutely no way that I could draw a crowd when there's cupcakes out in the hall. So anyway, we do want to make sure MUDA wants to recognize and congratulate all of our retirees, not just MUDA, but all of the retirees out there in the district. We do know that we had a lot of change and a lot of activity and hubbub and such going on in the last few months in the district, and so we are hopeful that next year we'll be able to return also our longevity awards so that people can stop asking me about them, since I'm not in charge of those. But we do appreciate the board, the district, for what they have done this evening to pull together this small recognition, but nonetheless, a recognition of all of our retirees, and we do wish them well, although right now is when we're all really jealous. We're like, what do you mean, there's two weeks of school left, and there's only two weeks left for you? One of the other things that I just wanted to bring to the board's attention, just a small thing as we're heading off to the summer, and something that we can get fixed and get taken care of, because it's an issue that MUDA has brought up before, and that is our access, especially in regards to communication to our board members. And MUDA had brought up the fact that some time back, we had personal email addresses along with other contact info for school board members, and that suddenly went to nothing but school voicemail or district voicemail boxes along with school email addresses that were posted on the website. And I don't know if anybody is aware of the fact that now those aren't there either. What's there is the all-board member's email, which, hey, by the way, if you email that, you guys don't get it. It boots it back, telling you that you don't have permission to email that group. Ask me how I know. I emailed you guys today. That's how I found out. But when you go on the website and you look at it and you click on each of your names, there is no email listed for each of you any longer. So we have gone from a bad situation to worse, and I do believe that it is all completely inadvertent. If you would have asked me that maybe nine months ago, I would have had a very different opinion, but tonight I will tell you that I think it is something completely and utterly inadvertent, and so if it's something we can get fixed over this summer, that would be amazingly helpful, because it was more time-consuming than it should have been to email all of you this afternoon, just for that reason. So if we can get that fixed, that would be amazingly helpful. The other couple of items that I was going to talk about, one, thankfully, I've already resolved and got my questions answered, managed that before the meeting, and the other one is going to be coming up later on. So the other thing that I will end with is that we do, in fact, hope that everybody has a safe and enjoyable summer, that we get through all of our promotions and graduations and everything with our sanity somewhat intact, and all of our students get to go off and enjoy the next steps in their journeys in life, and that we can all come back here in August, all safe and sound, and all re-energized for a new school year. Thank you so much. Have a great evening.
Thank you, Angela. Operating Engineers, Local Union Number Three. California Schools Association Employees Association 326 and 648. Association of Management and Confidential Employees and Supervisory Unit. Moving on to number eight, public comment. Persons wishing to address the board under public comments or a specific agenda item prior to the board taking action must complete a public comments card and place it in the basket. Speakers will be invited to the podium in order, in the order of the public comment cards that were received. The public may address topics on, excuse me, the public may address topics not on the agenda during this section of the agenda or ask that they be heard during a specific agenda item. Comments are limited to a maximum of three minutes per speaker, 20 minutes total time for public input on each item per board policy by law 9323. The Ralph Brown Act prevents the board of trustees from responding to these comments with the exception of clarifying questions. The California Government Code, Section 54954.2A, states no action or discussion shall be undertaken on any item not appearing on the posted agenda, except that all members of a legislative body or its staff may briefly respond to statements made during questions posed by persons exercising their public testimony rights under Section 54954.3. We will now hear public comments. The first one is Mr. Nicoló Orasco. Nicoló, you have the floor.
Good evening, board members. I stand before you disappointed, not one bit surprised, but disappointed. Your actions over recent months paint a clear picture of a district heading in the wrong direction. You've promoted Mr. Reeves to superintendent despite his documented failures to address serious student safety concerns. For over a year, a staff member who shared inappropriate sexually suggestive photos of a middle-school girl with middle-school boys continues to work with children, despite my formal complaint regarding this matter being unaddressed more than a year later. The witnesses identified have never been interviewed. It's unsurprising, then, that you're promoting the principal involved, the same one who helped cover up this photo, covered up the librarian slapping children, and who knows what else. What message does this send about accountability in our district? Meanwhile, another example of a failure in leadership is special education students' rights continuing to be violated, as I still can't get copies of current student IEPs, despite being assured by the superintendent that would be taken care of in March. You continue to leave open confidential employee matters to those who work within the district as well. Brought that to the attention last year. It's telling that you reward those who enable misconduct while ignoring those who report it. When I raise concerns about the former superintendent's behavior, your chosen leaders retaliated against me. Now you've elevated one of those same leaders to run the entire district. Weeks ago, I outlined these serious concerns in writing, yet all of the issues I've brought to your attention remain unaddressed, and you somehow have the audacity to wonder why people don't bring these concerns forward to you. What have I gotten for sharing my concerns with you? Well, for one, I've had an account I use to access instructional resources deactivated. It's revealing that your administrators would rather spend their time harassing me in a fashion that directly interferes with the instruction your students are receiving than addressing some of the serious misconduct in this district. Thank you, Mrs. Vedi. This district deserves leaders who confront problems, not those who enable them. You've chosen convenience over courage, loyalty over accountability. I don't remember that lesson at CSBA. Our students and staff deserve protection, not political theater. You're not going to bring this district to excellence by condemning it to incompetence. Thank you.
All right, now, that's the only public comment that we have. And we're going to move on to superintendent updates. Acting Superintendent, Mr. Jordan Reeves.
All right, Angela, we are going to do the longevity words. My apologies for not saying that earlier. That has been moved to the fall. Also, just would like to comment on the two FFA Spring Banquets at Marysville High School and Lenhurst. Shout out to all the people, ag teachers, everybody involved, parents, and putting those events together. They were truly phenomenal events. Also want to congratulate all the high school seniors who'll be graduating next year, as well as our eighth-grade students who will be promoting. Congratulations, and looking forward to attending a lot of those events. And again, thank you to all our staff for their incredible efforts this school year, and hopefully everybody will have a restful summer.
Thank you, Mr. Reeves. Moving on to presentations, 10.1, Building Grounds and the Tartan Update. We're looking forward to this. Mr. Doug Crowder, Director of Buildings and Grounds.
Members of the board, Superintendent Jordan Reeves, Cabinet, and our MJUSD family. Members of the board, Superintendent Jordan Reeves, Cabinet, and our MJUSD family. My name is Doug Crower. I'm the Director of Buildings and Grounds, and I'm here to give you our Buildings and Grounds Department update, 2024-2025. Before I start, I want to thank all the people of the Buildings and Grounds Department, the maintenance custodial and ground staff for a fabulous year, and I look forward to a great summer and a great start to the next school year. At a glance, we're going to go over our department overview, our work orders, our in-house jobs, contracted jobs, summer projects, facilities projects, and an overview of our five-year master plan. We'll start with our department overview. Our maintenance department performs routine maintenance and repairs on school buildings and equipment. We handle plumbing, electrical, carpentry, pretty much all tasks. We ensure that we have a safe, clean, and functional environment for students and staff. We respond to all maintenance requests either during work hours or after work hours, and we assist with general facilities upkeeps. We have 14 maintenance members. Our custodial staff cleans and sanitizes restrooms, hallways, classrooms, and offices daily. We perform waste disposal and floor care. We handle minor maintenance tasks such as replacing light bulbs and things like that. We assess with, assist with room setups for special events and after-school sports and activities, and we're here to maintain a safe hygienic environment per health and safety standards. We have fifteen, fifty-six custodians. As far as our grounds department, we perform landscaping, lawn care, seasonal maintenance. We mow, trim, plant, and remove debris. We maintain irrigation system and athletic fields as well as the playfields, and we upkeep our outdoor facilities for safety and appearance. We have 13 of those staff members. We generally have two funding sources. One is restricted routine maintenance. This funding source is funded through specifically designated account, the RRMA account, and it is funded by a percentage of the school district's general fund expenditures and is primarily used for routine repairs, renewals, and replacements to keep school buildings in good repair. And then we also have our deferred maintenance funds, and these funds typically address repairs that exceed what our routine maintenance can do, and it's for larger projects such as roofing, HVAC, plumbing, electrical, and all the critical facilities needs. This ensures a long-term sustainability and safety for school district facilities. As of, from June to May, we completed over 2,000 work orders from our whole maintenance department, which is maintenance, grounds, and custodial. Our in-house maintenance jobs completed by our staff can include but aren't limited to flooring, plumbing, HVAC, electrical, painting, pretty much anything construction-wise we handle. These projects are generally funded through the routine maintenance. Some of the highlights that we have are the stadium barbecue structure that we rebuilt for MHS Stadium. We redid the ag barn for MHS. This project was funded through CTE money, and it was a joint effort between the Marysville Welding Shop and our maintenance shop. So that's a pretty cool project that we enjoyed doing. We redid the batting cages for Lynnhurst that kind of failed, and the concrete was falling apart. We tore out that concrete and replaced the structural poles and put up new cages. We redid the DG around it, which kind of moved that track into the baseball field and kind of completed that project. We did some remodeling for the Middle College as well as eighteen-to-twenty-two moderate-severe program that we took over from Yuba County Office of Education. We installed two restrooms at Dobbins and Loma Rica for the preschool programs. The Loma Rica program was up and running, and Dobbins will be up and running next year. We also did cabinets and countertops at multiple sites as well as flooring installations. I've included a few pictures of some of those projects. This ag barn, the before and after, so we redid all the concrete or tore out the concrete curbs and restructured those. All the welding and fencing was done by the Marysville welding program. It's pretty cool. And we added some electrical for infrared heating for the animals as well as overhead plumbing for their irrigation or their, the animals' water. This is a picture of a storage room inside the district office that was used by MCA for a lot of years, and we remodeled it for the adult ed classrooms. They're currently being remodeled again for the technology department move into the district office building. Here we got a restroom that we remodeled for the preschool program at Covellade, and some pictures of, or a picture of the Loma Rica preschool restroom and sink install. Unfortunately, I didn't add a picture of the restroom, but it turned out really nice. We also did new sinks and countertops for the MHS restroom. This is a pretty cool one because the sinks used to be wall-mounted sinks, and we were having a lot of problems with vandalism. And we came up with the idea that if we did countertop-mounted sinks, that we would eliminate that vandalism, and so far, that's been the case. We added signage for the new music room that we did last year. We built a team room inside the athletic storage room at Lynnhurst High School, walls, ceiling, and flooring, so that's an epoxy flooring that our maintenance staff did in-house. And a picture of the batting cage that we added at Lynnhurst. Our contracted jobs are categorized as projects that exceed manpower and time for our maintenance staffing. They can include projects such as windows, doors, fire alarms, playgrounds, portable flooring, et cetera. These projects are funded with both restricted routine maintenance and deferred maintenance, and typically, or not typically, but the projects that are greater than 70,000 go out for a competitive bid under that, from the adopted Cupca Plan. Don't ask me to tell you what that is. I forget right now. Some of the highlights of these contracted jobs, we added HVAC at the warehouse, fencing, preschool drop-off at Oliver's. There was a problem with the, with parents and the buses all being together. We came up with a new spot to add the bus drop-off, and we fenced that off in the back, and I think so far, it's done a really good job. We added fencing for the warehouse delivery, cafeteria doors, music room doors. We did an entrance buzzer for safety at South Lynnhurst. That was, that was one that we enjoyed doing. We did multiple flooring jobs, fire alarm, Lynnhurst and Oliver's. We did an upgrade to the fire alarm at Marysville High School, so that's, that's been really good to update some of those systems. Window replacement, fieldhouse at MHS. Vinyl window coverings for the street side of Kynock, which is a good safety deal. Flooring at McKinney, kitchen doors for Foot Hill and McKinney, science doors at McKinney. Dry rot repair at Oliver's for siding. Already spoke about the music room signage. New flooring in the C building at Lynnhurst. I would say that that flooring was brown when I went to school there, so it was nice to finally be able to replace that. And then a couple of HVAC jobs and fiber optic install for preschool at Covellade is currently going on. Here's some pictures of some of those jobs. This one's of some lockers, the Foot Hill lockers. When we did that modernization at Foot Hill, we did it for a certain amount of students that were there. We exceeded that amount of students and needed more lockers, so we were able to find a space to put those in. They look like they belong there. Installed new library doors at Linda, and again, C building upstairs carpet. We replaced five-foot fencing at Loma Rica with six-foot slatted fencing for security. The MHS fieldhouse windows were old wooden sash windows currently getting, they keep on getting broken with the balls inside the fieldhouse, so we replaced them with new dual-pane windows that'll be energy efficient and aesthetically pleasing. We added dry food, HVAC for the dry food storage. That was funded through Nutritional Services. And then this gate buzzer at South Lynnhurst was, like I said, a dual effort between an outside vendor installed the buzzer, but the latch wasn't working properly, so our maintenance staff redid that latch. So it looks like, it looks like it was meant to be there, and we did that in-house. Summer projects, you can see we got a, we got a pretty good list of summer projects here. I'll go through some of them. I don't think I need to go through them, but we're going to do a library remodel. Talked about the technology move into the district office. We're going to do some remodeling at MCA. And then we'll move MCA into the old technology building. This will be able to help us from keeping the kids having to walk across the new freeway to the building that we were renting. We have a couple of roofing jobs that we plan on doing, siding and trim replacement. Anybody that walks outside of the back of the district office knows that the siding is not in the best of shape. We got lots of, oh, we're going to automate the irrigation at the JB baseball field at Lynnhurst. Those are currently an old-style push-in sprinkler system, which I don't think any school district uses anymore. And we're doing a kitchen remodel at Foot Hill School, which is being paid for through nutritional service money. We're currently working on preventative maintenance for our HVAC systems. This is including filter replacements, which are currently underway. And anybody that's walked, that's drove by the front of the district office probably saw the siding that covered the windows for 25 years. We replaced that siding with windows last year, and we never got to taking down the walls on the inside. We're going to do that and open up the windows, so that'll be nice. And then a couple of other jobs, we're going to build a kitchen for the Yuba College eighteen-to-twenty-two moderate-severe program. Again, that we took over for Yuba County Office of Education. Our current facilities projects, we installed five new portables at three different sites. We install, we're working on Marysville Track, which is getting a new surface right now. In a couple of weeks, we'll be getting the sod put down on the softball field, and a couple of weeks after that, after the surface is down, we can, we can sod inside the track area. We completed the Yuba Garden Science Lab. We've also completed our Boggo portable project minus the storage shed, which we're waiting for that to come in so we can get it put in. We have solar at Cedar Lane and Foot Hill, due to be completed this summer with battery backup at Foot Hill, and two inclusive playgrounds that have been completed at Kynock and Linda. Here's some photos of the track project. Portable being installed at Cedar Lane, Yuba Garden Science Lab, Kynock, and this is a picture of the Kynock playground, but we have another one at Linda. And then this is an overview of our five-year deferred maintenance plan. We plan on replacing flooring, windows, HVAC, asphalt, and roofing over the five years. These pictures of Linda School are our old wooden sash window that's a single pane, and the wood is starting to deteriorate. We have this in multiple sites that we want to work on replacing. Lynnhurst, we want to work on painting Lynnhurst, but the stucco in Lynnhurst is not in the greatest condition, so we want to do that first before we get to the painting. We have multiple siding projects. This particular picture is of MCA. We have that throughout the district that we want to continue to work on. This particular picture of Foot Hill Roof, we're going to recode it with California Standard roof coating, which is going to give us a 15-year warranty, and we're going to complete, put in new, new ductwork as well. Then Yuba Feather, the asphalt is buckling due to the trees that are surrounding. We've talked to the Forest Service, and they're going to work on removing those trees for us, and then we'll come in and do the new asphalt on the play surface as well as the cracking that's happening in the front of the school. And then we have a picture of the Foot Hill kitchen flooring. This is a linoleum product that's been down there for as long as I've been working for the school district, and we're going to work on replacing that with epoxy flooring that we've been doing throughout the kitchens in the district. And then anybody that's been out to Cedar Lane knows that that asphalt out there is in horrible condition. That's one of the projects that we want to start working on first. That's a safety issue for the kids. And that is the end of the presentation. If anybody has any questions for me? Yes, sir. We're thinking early to late July, or early to mid-July.
I just, Doug, I want to thank you and your guys in facilities. They do a phenomenal job. I've been in education for their years. You guys are top-notch. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Doug.
Thank you.
Move on to number 11, Superintendent. Eleven point one. Approval of the May 13th, 2025 regular board meeting minutes.
Hold on, hold on. Ten point two. One more presentation.
Sorry, I got the crib note version.
Oh, that's all right. Good evening, Superintendent Jordan Reeves and board members. My name is London Duñez. I'm the district coordinator for the Expanded Learning, and I have with me my office staff and my director, Lori Guy. We have Angelica Mora, Liz Diaz, Rosio Rodriguez, and Tori Taylor, and we have a presentation for you. Ready?
Good evening, Superintendent Reeves, members of the Board of Trustees and the MJUSD community. We're so excited to be here tonight to share a bit of the magic that's happening in our Expanded Learning programs. It really is something special. To get us started, let's meet the amazing team that keeps ELOP running smoothly every single day with heart, humor, and a whole lot of hustle. Here's our incredible office crew. Angelica Mora, Chris Klinkenbeard, Rosio Rodriguez, and Tori Taylor. We're lucky to be led by Supervisor Liz Diaz and District Coordinator London Duñez, and supported by Lori Guy, Director of Data and Student Improvement, and Amy Stratton, Executive Director of Educational Services. Together, our mission is to create a safe, inclusive, and engaging environment where students can learn, grow, and shine beyond the bell. Although ELOP and ACES are funded separately, they work together as one united, comprehensive program, offering way more than just after-school care. Our Expanded Learning Program includes the after-school program, we call it STARS, before and after-school enrichment classes, and four awesome intercessions throughout the year. So who brings all of this to life? Our site leads, activity providers, support staff, and classroom teachers, each one bringing heart, energy, and creativity to our students every single day. Let's meet our STARS program leads and activity providers. We've got 25 leads and 66 providers across 17 sites. They do an amazing job creating a safe, structured, and welcoming environment after school while also building meaningful relationships with students. Our staff also invests in their own growth through professional development and conscious discipline, leader in me, and systems of success. They really are the heart and soul of what we do. Our STARS after and systems of success. They really are the heart and soul of what we do. Our STARS after-school program is so much more than just a place to hang out after the bell rings. Right after school, students get a healthy snack, unwind a bit, and reconnect with friends before jumping into activities. From there, they get help with homework or join academic enrichment activities. And in support of our district literacy plan, mobile libraries from Scholastic are coming soon, so students will have even more resources to support reading. Then comes the best part: enrichment and exploration. Arts and crafts, STEM challenges, structured games, and outdoor fun. Our students get to dive into hands-on experiences every day. We're serving over 1,400 STARS students daily, and we continue to grow thanks to our incredible staff and strong school-site partnerships. Enrollment in our enrichment classes has been booming, and that's thanks to our passionate teachers and support staff. This year, we've served over 2,600 Expanded Learning students with enrichment classes like mariachi, Mong culture and dance, chess, coding and robotics, gardening, drama, sports, leadership, STEAM, cooking, academic tutoring, and so much more. We're thrilled to see more students exploring their interests and talents through these opportunities. We're also incredibly proud of our intercession program: 30 full days of Expanded Learning throughout the year.
The most important thing about Martin Junior is that he wanted to embrace the world.
Each day starts with academic instruction from credentialed teachers focusing on reading, math, and STEAM. In the afternoon, students dive into fun enrichment activities led by our STARS staff. We also provide transportation and three meals daily to support families. And each intercession has a special theme like harvesting happiness, historical heroes, or springtime safari, complete with themed books and assemblies. Summer enrollment is happening now, and this year's theme is Camp Explore and Soar. Students will explore the ocean and outer space through themed Scholastic books and the Summer Scholar's Curriculum, which targets ELA and math skills. We've got exciting field trips planned like the San Francisco Exploratorium, SMUD Museum of Science and Curiosity, and the Esquire IMAX Theater, and on-campus fun with the Skydome Planetarium and the Magic of Science Assemblies. It's going to be a summer full of learning, fun, and adventure. One of our biggest wins has been expanding the enrichment opportunities students experience during after-school and intercession. This matters because these programs help students build vocabulary, confidence, problem-solving skills, motivation, and self-esteem. And the data backs it up. Students in our programs show improved attendance and lower suspension rates. To make sure we're meeting the needs of our families, we send out yearly surveys, and the feedback is overwhelmingly positive. 98% of parents say their child feels safe and enjoys the program. 97% say it's helping their child do better in school. 99% of students say that they feel safe and that the program is fun. This year, we've also hosted Zoom forums to hear directly from parents, and we're building even stronger connections through literacy nights and community events with the California Community Schools Partnership Program. We're thrilled to share that our program was honored with the Golden Bell Award from the California School Boards Association. This recognition highlights the meaningful work our team is doing to close learning gaps and keep students engaged outside of regular school hours. Looking ahead, our program will support average daily attendance recovery through after-school academic tutoring and intercessions led by credentialed MJUSD teachers. It's a win-win for student success and district growth. Let's take a look at how we're funded for the 24-25 school year. Our ACES program is receiving about $2.8 million, and ELOP is being funded at $10.9 million. These funds allow us to continue offering a unified, high-quality program that supports our students before school, after school, during breaks, and beyond. It's not just about the numbers. It's about what those dollars make possible: more engaging classes, more hands-on experiences, more support for students and families, and more opportunities for kids to learn, explore, and grow in safe, inspiring environments. We're incredibly proud of how far we've come, and we're just getting started. The future is bright, and we can't wait to keep building on this momentum. Thank you so much for the opportunity to share our program with you
I would just like to report out that right now, our current enrollment for summer school is 730 students. We have seven, over 70 teachers and 100 support staff working this summer from June 11 through July 3. We're focusing really on those skills, academic skills, reading skills, math skills, to avoid that summer slide and to kind of give our kids a little boost for the next school year. Do we have, is there any questions?
Does board have any questions for London? Great job, London.
Thank you.
You and your team are doing a great job.
Thank you. Have a great team, and we have some of our STARS providers and leads here also. And thank you to all the teachers that make our program amazing. Thank you so much.
Moving on to number 11, Superintendent. 11.1. Approval of the May 13, 2025 Regular Board Meeting Minutes. Are there any noted corrections? If not, do I have a motion to approve? Motion from Mr. Fuhrer, and a second. Mr. Taylor, second. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? 11.2. Approval of Consent Agenda Items. We'll now approve the Consent Agenda Items 12.1 through 16.5. Is there any item that the board would like to pull for further clarification? If not, do I have a motion to approve the Consent Agenda Items 12.1 through 16.5? I have a motion from Mr. Crawford. And do I have a second? Mr. Steeman, second. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Number 17, New Business Superintendent. This is informational piece.
Sorry about that. We're looking at the first read for the, I guess we'd call them the zeros as far as philosophy of the 2000 administration and the 9,000 bylaws.
Does anybody have any questions? Okay. And we will be moving on to New Business, number 18, Administrative Services, which we don't have. Now 19, New Business Educational Services. 19.1. A presentation. Approval and adoption of the Expanded Learning Opportunities Program, ELOP. London.
Okay, this is the updated ELOP plan. We've included some of the cost-shared buildings and also some of the added staff, such as the Assistant Principals at the site, and then also included the Attendance Recovery Program. It is required every three years to renew the program. This year was a updated version. They had it, some added areas that we needed to include, and that was also field trips.
Does any members have any questions for Ms. London? Then can I have a motion to approve the Approval and Adoption of the Expanded Learning Opportunities Program ELOP? Motion, I got one from Seth Steinman, second from Mr. Galicia. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. 19.2 is an open public hearing. The Governing Board of Marysville Joint Unified School District will hold a public hearing on the renewal of the College and Career Access Pathways, CCAP, or CCAP partnership agreement, a dual enrollment partnership agreement between Marysville Joint Unified School District and Uba College.
All right. Good evening, Board of Trustees and Superintendent Reeves. My name is Paula Sotelo. I'm the College and Career Specialist with the College and Career Department. So with the CCAP, it is a partnership agreement that provides dual enrollment opportunities for students who may not already be college-bound or who are underrepresented in higher education. The goal is to develop seamless pathways from high school to community college for career technical education or preparation for transfer, improving high school graduation rates, or helping students, helping high school pupils achieve college and career readiness. So it is recommended that the board hold, open the public hearing for the CCAP agreement.
Okay, so I need a motion to open the public hearing. Do I have a motion? Mr. Yang, and a second. Mr. Fuhrer, second. Any opposed? All in favor? Motion carries. Public hearing is now open. Do we have any public comments?
Good evening. Angela Stiegel, President for the Marysville Unified Teachers Association. And first off, so that people don't panic when they see me up here, I'm not telling you guys to vote no on this. Just clear that up right now. That is not the purpose of me being here. I do have a few questions, and then also I just wanted to let the board know and let everybody know that Jordan Reeves and I have been working on the side letter for dual enrollment between UDA and the school district, and so we are about this close to having that all done and signed off, and I don't see that there are going to be any big hiccups there. But there are still a couple of things within the CCAP that I have questions about that I think may need to be updated before it gets all signed off and sent over to Uba College. And so one of the big questions that I have is, on the board agenda, it says that there's no fiscal impact, but Uba College's CCAP agreement says that they are claiming 47.3 full-time student equivalent. And so do we know, I don't know exactly, are they claiming part, and we get part, or do we get all of ours and they get crumbs? What do they got?
Yes, that's correct.
Perfect.
They have to fulfill 180 minutes, instructional minutes a day, and we check that off with our instructional minutes every year.
Perfect, because that was one thing that I was totally unprepared to try to figure out on my own. So thanks. The other thing is, on the program year, we're still listing a whole bunch of classes on there for which would be a violation of board policy for those to be offered to our students. And so I noticed that it says it's for 23, 24. We're in 24, 25 and about to be done with that. And so for 25, 26, are we going to fix this so that the list that is on pages 24, 25, and 26 include classes that our students are allowed to take within our own board policy and within the soon-to-be-signed side
Yes, that would be the plan.
Okay, because yeah, I was a little, at first I thought it said 24, 25, and I was like, oh, that year's almost over. And then when I saw that it said 23, 24, I was like, ooh, now we're going back in time. This is cool.
I think, not to interrupt, I think Pellek can explain why it said 23, 24. We had a conversation about that.
So on page 23, that's Appendix A, so that's in reference to the year prior. So those are the classes that we offered in the prior years. But I can get you an updated list of the classes that will be offered for this upcoming academic year.
Perfect. Thank you. And by the way, not to brag or anything, but absolutely amazing person you have in charge of this, I might be slightly biased for a really good reason. But I think that is all the questions I have. And like I said, we'll get the courses thing figured out and get our side letter finished off, and we should be good to go, because then we can make sure that we go by board policy and all that good stuff. Thanks.
Thank you, Ms. Stiegel. Thank you, Ms. Sotelo. Does the board members have any questions at all? Then we'll move to 19.3, and that's to close the public hearing for renewal of the College and Careers Access Pathways CCAP partnership agreement, dual enrollment partnership between Marysville Joint Unified School District and Uba College. Do I have a motion to close the public hearing?
Motion to close.
I heard in stereo, I think that's Mr. Crawford. All right. And a second. Second, Mr. Taylor. All in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. Moving on to 19.4. Approve the renewal of the College and Career Readiness Pathways CCAP partnership agreement between dual enrollment partnerships between MJUSD and Uba Community College District. Again, Ms. Sotelo, and we also have, is this another public comment?
No, that was right.
That's not, it says 19.4, so it's, all right.
Yeah.
Okay.
During public.
All right. This is the approval of the renewal. Do I have any questions? Then I would like to seek an approval for the renewal of the College and Career Access Pathways Program CCAP Partner Agreement and Dual Enrollment Partnership between MJUSD and Uba College, Uba Community College District. Do I have a, a motion to approve? Okay, Mr. Fuhrer, and a second. Mr. Crawford. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Moving on to 19.5. Approve the recommendation to close Marysville Joint Unified School District Adult Ed Program. Ms. Stratton.
Yeah, good evening. Last, our last board meeting, we talked about this, it's gonna be a two-step process. We had a conversation last meeting about closing the adult ed program due to fiscal reasons, and tonight I'm asking you to approve that request.
Board members have any questions for Ms. Stratton? Then do I have a motion to approve the recommendation to close Marysville Joint Unified School District Adult Ed Program? Mr. Crawford with a motion to approve, and a second. Mr. Steeman. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. 19.6. Approve the recommendation to close the Middle School Academy. Ms. Stratton.
Same thing. I'm asking the board, we talked about it at the last board meeting. I'm asking you to go ahead and approve the recommendation to close Middle College due to fiscal reasons.
Members, do we have any questions for Ms. Stratton? Okay, then can I get a motion to approve the recommendation to close the Middle College Academy? Motion, please. Mr. Galicia. Okay, and a second.
Second.
Mr. Crawford, thank you. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Moving on to number 20, New Business Personnel Services. 20.1. Approval of Employee Contract, Assistant Superintendent of Educational Services. Mr. Jordan Reeves, Superintendent.
Ms. Eckert, can you come to the podium, please? Well, obviously, people in the room can recognize you. Longtime Lynnhurst High School principal, I think 17 years.
17 years.
Sorry, 17 years at Lynnhurst High School. And longtime district employee. It was an extensive process in filling your position as Assistant Superintendent of Ed Services. We're excited and thrilled to have you, and we welcome you back to the district. And I don't know if the board has any questions for you or anything, but, or anything you would like to share. But again, welcome back, sir. We're happy to have you.
Thank you. I'm excited to have the opportunity to come back and to work with the folks here at Marysville Joint. Our strength has always been in our employees, and sometimes I feel like we didn't quite yoke that to its fullest potential. And so really looking forward to getting in and, and getting the work done as a team. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anybody have any question for Mr. Eckert?
Welcome back.
Thank you, Frank.
Sure. Well, with that, we'd like to approve the employee contract for Assistant Superintendent of Educational Services. I need a motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
Mr. Crawford has a motion on the floor to approve. Do I have a second? Second by Mr. Steeman. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Motion carries. Congratulations, Mr. Eckert.
Thank you very much.
There's no New Business on Business Services. With that, I'd like to thank everyone. And our next scheduled meeting is June 10, 2025. This meeting is now adjourned.
YubaSutterLives local government live streams are presented by Plumas Lake Self-Storage in Plumas Lake, where lifelong local residents are helping other residents keep things safe, providing indoor storage units, outdoor RV and vehicle parking, moving supplies, and Penske truck rentals. Details at plumaslakeselfstorage.com.